Good evening, everyone. I would like to declare the meeting open today at 5:30pm. I would also like to welcome fellow councillors and to those in the community that are choosing to view us via live stream. This is the first meeting of council conducted by ZOO as per the new regulations due to COVID-19. Please be patient with us as we navigate this new form of meeting practice. Any technical issue that may result in the live stream failing will cause a delay or adjournment of this meeting. Let's start with the acknowledgement. We, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two on the agenda is privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. Item number three, apologies. Councillors, do we have any apologies today? There's a recommendation on page one. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Yes, councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation that the apology from councillor Jevanetti and councillor Summer be noted and a leave of absence be granted.
Thanks. Do I have a second? Councillor Adam?
May I second that motion?
Thank you, councillor Adam. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. Item number four is declaration of conflict of interest. Councillors, is there any declaration of conflict of interest with respect to the agenda item today? None? Thank you. Moving on to item number five, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. There's a recommendation on page one. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Sutton?
A motion that the minutes of the 21st of April 2020, council meeting, and 28th of April 2020, special council meeting, as circulated, be confirmed.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson?
I'll second that, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. Item number six, public question time. Nil received. There are no questions today. Moving on to page two of the agenda, item number 7.1, contract 1982, construction of flood lighting to Princess Park variation. Councillors, there's a recommendation on page two. Would anyone like to move a motion, please? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, madam mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page two, please. Approved contract variation number five under contract 1982, construction of flood lighting to Princess Park with a value of $6,283, including GST. And part two, authorised chief executive officer to approve future variations under contract to the value of $31,900.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Do I have a second? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor.
It allows to get on and complete this job. It might look like, you know, the project itself as well, over budget, but there is plenty of more opportunities to use these poles when they do arrive for China. There's plenty of other obels that will require lighting in the future. So it is a short-term investment to get this project underway, and I fully endorse it. And that ground down there, it's the home of Shep's ones and lots of other pre-club, you know.
Okay, we have to pause because the live streaming is not working. Thank you. Councillor Patterson, do you want to continue?
Where was I up to doing live streams? I'd nearly completed it. I don't know how much it went to air. But basically summarising, it is a little bit different because there is a large contingency, which is accounted for by the fact that we have to import, we were importing some Chinese poles, the contractor was, and now we've sourced them from Australia. Those poles will be used on future projects. So what we're effectively doing is getting this project up and running, and the poles that will arrive in the next few months can be used on another project.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, madam mayor. Just to say that the overall difference in sourcing this equipment from Australia rather than China at this stage is about 14 grand. So that's the difference between what we proposed to do and what we ended up doing. So overall, allowing this project to be delivered in a lot quicker time, but I think there's a lot of money, extra money to pay. As councillor Patterson said, when these other lights do come, we will definitely be putting them to use in a new project down the track. So I fully support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. So moving on to our next item, it's item number 8.1, on page six, Australian National Piano Award Funding Agreement 2023 to 2025. Councillors, there's a recommendation on page six. Would anyone like to move a motion, please? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation that the council supports the Australian National Piano Award through the provision of the funding to a total value of $121,000, including GST, for the piano competitions to be held in 2023 to 2025.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Do I have a second? Councillor Orisvari?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. I'd second the recommendation as put by councillor O'Keefe.
Thank you. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. Look, this is a really important one for our community. It's a prestigious worldwide livestreamed event. It was due to be held in 2020 this year, but again, due to coronavirus, we've had a delay, but it will certainly go ahead in 2021. Began back in 1992, so it's a fairly long opportunity for us to continue, you know, to have the piano awards here, as I said, held every second year. So it's really a wonderful opportunity. We have international performers that come, and we certainly attract international attention, which is great for our community. And we have 30% of those actually attending are not from our region, so it's a great economic benefit as well. So yeah, fantastic. And also, I think it's great to acknowledge Neil and Ina Werner, who actually brought this event to Shepparton, and it was an aspiration of theirs to have something like this. Traditionally, I think the closest one to this is held in Sydney. So as a, you know, as a country town, to have this internationally prestigious event awards is incredible and certainly something we should all be very proud to be part of and to support.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Orisvari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, madam mayor. Councillor O'Keefe has nailed it.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? No? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd just like to point out that the money, the funding that we're providing is for the prize money for these events for 23 and 25, because it's held every second year. And it is a really prestigious event, as councillor O'Keefe remarked about, and it continues to attract a very, or the highest caliber of penis in the world, really. So it's well worth having, and it is a great event for Greater Shepparton.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just to support the other councillors' comments, it's very rare that a town of our size has the opportunity to host a national event, and one as prestigious as this, I think, should never be not taken up, or that opportunity should always be taken up, and we have. I just want to clarify, this motion, the recommendations for to have the event in 2023 and 2025, not 2025, just to make that clear.
Thank you very much. Thanks, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. Next is item 8.2, on page 10, Murchison Neighbourhood House, request for financial support. There's a recommendation on page 10. Would any councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'd like to move the motion on page 10, which reads, the recommendation that the council approved provision of a one-off $30,000 payment, GST free, to the Murchison Neighbourhood House Committee of Management to go towards the purchase of 23 Industry Street mergers. This payment will be contingent on the committee of management signing an agreement with council, outing the provisions of the financial support, outlining, sorry.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Keefe?
Second that. Thank you, madam mayor.
Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, madam mayor. I think we are definitely all aware of what's happening in Murchison. It's been a bit of a disaster for the community. The Murchison Community House, like all our community houses, play an extremely important part in our community, and probably none more than Murchison does. They've got a terrific setup down there and very strong committee, and they work very hard. This will help them continue on, and I'm sure, I'm not speaking for all councillors, I can't, but, you know, we're right behind yous guys down there, and if we need, you need more support, you know where you need to come. It is a very important part of Murchison, and I'd really encourage you to stick with it. You're doing a great job, and as the saying goes these days, we'll get through this together.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor, and absolutely support councillor Patterson's comments, but, you know, I have been over there, and there's such a broad range of activity that happens, you know, across that house, the neighbourhood house, and some great community activities. It's really important as a community that they have those opportunities, you know, to socialise and come out amongst the community and be involved in a range of activities. I think it's important to note that the $30,000 that we're offering to contribute, you know, they're going to look at, they're going to need further funding. So let's hope that that certainly can be achieved, because we want to see this community house, you know, to continue, this neighbourhood house to continue. So they've been through, you know, a tough time over there, and as councillor Patterson says, not only councils, but I know our community, you know, really support mergers, and they're a great little community. They do fantastic things across Greater Shepparton, and, you know, let's hope that we can keep this going and that our contribution, $30,000, you know, will hopefully make a difference. But it is part of a broader funding, and let's hope that that funding stream does come to fruition.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. So next agenda item is on page number 30, 9.1, April 2020 Monthly Financial Report. There's a recommendation on page 13. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation that the council receive a note for April 2020 Monthly Financial Report.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Hazelman?
Yes, madam mayor, I'll second the motion of councillor O'Keefe.
Thank you. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I do think we're having someone else come and speak to that. Is that Mr Harry tonight? Or was it Mr Tartsel?
Can do.
Yeah. Do you want?
Can do, councillor O'Keefe. The report basically indicates that we're tracking in accordance with the Q3 forecast, which was presented to the councillors, which is good news. Despite the difficult COVID-19 times we're in, that report also indicated some of the impacts that we're having. Another thing to note is the capital delivery component of the financial report. It's key because this is our largest capital delivery programme ever, and we're approaching just over $52 million in delivery at the end of April, which is significant. Now, what's not in the report, which I'd like to highlight tonight, is the ongoing good work of the finance department that are working actually off-site to deliver these reports to us and to keep the finances of the council in good measure whilst there's a lot of pressure on us. So they're doing fantastic work and will continue to do that as we approach the budget, which is the next major financial report that the council will receive on the 16th of June. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harriet. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, madam mayor. Just a brief comment in respect of the capital budget. We've always known that a capital budget of this size was always going to be difficult to be delivered within the financial year. I know that as far as our strategic resource plan going forward, we were looking at having on an annual basis a significantly smaller capital budget than this, but a number of larger projects have certainly come onto the radar and impacted. It's pleasing to see that out of that Capital Works Programme, we're at $52 million now at the end of quarter one, and that would give some confidence that we're going to get very, very close to our Capital Works target.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay. Yes, councillor Patterson?
Yeah, probably more to what councillor Hazelman said. We've spent 74, nearly three quarters of the current year's projection budget has been spent, and in comparison, this time last year, there was only 46. And I've got to tell you, driving through the mainstream route, it's a pleasure. There's works going everywhere. You get over to Shepparton, you start driving around, there's works going on footpaths and roadways. The whole place is buzzing. There's a lot of work present, and that's really good to see. And if you look at the Capital Works budget versus actual, the projection is the lines will meet is what we want, is total expenditure by the 30th of June. So we're heading in that direction. So yeah, it's all looking good, considering the circumstances we're in.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. Next agenda item is item 9.2, on page 15, contracts awarded under delegation and contracts advertised but yet to be awarded. There's a recommendation on page 15. Councillors, would anyone like to speak to, would anyone like to move the motion? Councillor Orisvari?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation contained on page 15, that the council note, one, contracts awarded under delegated authority by the chief executive officer; two, contracts awarded under delegated authority by director; and three, requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded.
Thank you, councillor Orisvari. Do I have a second? Councillor Hazelman? Thank you. Councillor Orisvari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. As always, these come up every monthly meeting, and they are a snapshot in relation to where the council is in relation to the awarding of contracts. You will note that to those that have the agenda, there's a multiplicity of examples, but a couple that I'm particularly interested in is contract 2020, which is the one which relates to the appointment of the Sam Brown campaign, a production and media placement agency. And I note that Alchemy Media have been successful, and Alchemy Media, as we all know, are a well-respected local media company that has done great work, particularly in relation to the Great Things Happen Here campaign. The other thing I'd like to detail also is contract 20043, which talks to the detailed design of the Princess Park Pavilion Shepparton. As a long-term resident of Shepparton, in the past, I've spent a lot of time watching and waiting for activity down at Princess Park, because Princess Park, right on the doorstep of our community, needs a lot of money spent on it, a lot of TLC, tender loving care, and it's been long overdue, and I certainly hope that it gets a continuing role on effect with these sort of projects. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Orisvari. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. I think, and flowing on from the previous item, I think this, the projects documented here gives some substance to our confidence about the Capital Works Programme. There is an enormous amount of work here. Tenders closing in April, being evaluated, being awarded at a future council meeting or under delegation. It indicates the diversity of projects that are currently underway, but also probably presents to the staff a little bit of a challenge to ensure that all of these projects are completed.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? No? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just briefly, I think it's important to note, these motions, as councillor Orisvari stated, appear every month. It's a great exercise in transparency. It's about, people always ask me as a councillor, where does our money go? Well, a great portion of it goes to doing exactly what you see before you. So I think it's great that people kept up to date with exactly what their money's doing and what their rates are going towards.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? No? Okay. So we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Moving on to our next agenda item, it's 10.1, on page number 19, electricity procurement update. There's a recommendation on page 19. Would anyone like to move a motion? Councillor Adam?
I'll move the recommendation on page 19 as the motion. Would you like me to read it out?
No, it should be all right. Quite lengthy. Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Councillor Orisvari? Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. I second the recommendation as put by councillor Adam.
Adam, thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, madam mayor. Look, the recommendation or the motion is approve a six-month interim electricity contract for large market and unmeted streetlights with municipal association. Basically, that means we're entering into a collective agreement with the, being led by the MAV. It's all about getting cheaper electricity, but not only cheaper power for our varied sites, about getting environmentally friendly energy, I suppose is the best way to explain it. That's what we're doing. This is the culmination of a bit of work by the MAV and a lot of councils who've worked closely together. It should have happened six months ago or four, five months ago, but unforeseen circumstances led it to being delayed. But once we adopt this, it'll all begin, I gather, on the 1st of July. So I think it also fits in with our climate emergency strategy and all the other environmental sensitivities that we're hoping to address as a council.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Orisvari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? No? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? No? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. The next item is 14.1, on page 24. Oh, sorry. Yep, 14, documents for signing and, have I missed something? I think I have. Yes, thank you. I turned two pages in one go, so. So the next item is number 11, reports from councillors, nil received. Item 12, reports from special and advisory committees, nil received. And item 13, notices of motion, amendment or recession, nil received. Next is page 24, item 14.1, Shepparton Adult and Community Education College, Inc., known as Shepparton ACE College Funding Deal Agreement. There's a recommendation on page 24. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Patterson?
I'd like to move the recommendation on page 24, madam mayor. That the council, would you like me to read it or?
If you want to, it's a short one.
The council authorised the chief executive officer to sign and seal the Funding Deal Agreement for the relocation of the Shepparton Adult and Community Education College, Inc., known as ACE College.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to second that.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson? Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, please, madam mayor. It would be an absolute pleasure, because this is one of the biggest win-win-win situations I've seen since I've been on council. The CFA have been looking for a home, a new home, for several years. They haven't been able to find one. When they did find one, the developers had always found that because it's the CFA, they wanted to boost the price up. So they had looked at several sites, and eventually they come to council, looking at Caribou Park, and asked if we'd be interested. We had some negotiations, and that led to a decision with, sorry, ACE, that council would sell the land to CFA. There is also a retardation basin to go on that site. We have used, council have used that money to help with the relocation of ACE to a new site on Maud Street, which they're currently doing. So it's a real win for them. We've used more of that money to put into our open space, which we are looting someone, some of it, and that is a new development or extension of the current development down at Caribou, sorry, down at Vibeit Reserve. So it's a win-win for them as well down there with the facilities, and it just generally is a win for the whole community. The new site, the current site at Caribou Park will have a sign-up saying it is Caribou Park. Caribou Park does have a lot of history, with youth club hall was there. That will be all retained as far as the history of it as in the park. So basically, the community, I believe, has done very well. The college has done well, CFA have done well, and those that are down at Vibeit Reserve have done very well. So it's really a win-win situation. Fully endorse the movement.
Thank you. Thanks very much, councillor Patterson. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I mean, yeah, I think everyone in the community is really happy about the relocation of the fire station, and it's, you know, it's a great location, there's plenty of room there. I think we need to really note the patience from ACE as a business that's been impacted, an organisation that's been impacted by this change, and I think they've collaborated really well with council and obviously with the Country Fire Association. So well done to them, and I do hear that it's, you know, it's been very successful. I think the bus interchange and getting the kids into the centre of town has been well-received, and it's hoped that, you know, they continue to do really well. They offer a great service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe.
Madam mayor, could I just clarify some of the financial arrangements around this project?
Sure.
So just clarify, the CFA, or the state government, through the CFA have provided funding, which councillor Patterson correctly indicated, is going to ACE, and we've facilitated that by allowing the CFA to occupy the Caribou Park, which was previously allocated for a large retardation basin. But we've been able to redesign and modify the site to allow both the CFA to locate and for the retardation basin to be built, and for the crown land status to be adjusted so that the CFA can occupy that site and the management arrangements change. So just wanted to clarify that state government are partners in this as well by providing funding through the CFA for not only the relocation of ACE, but also to support other relocation options and enhancement of sporting facilities in nearby but also to support other relocation options and enhancement of sporting facilities in nearby areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harriet, for your clarification. That's good. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Item, next agenda item is on page twenty-five, fifteen point one, Councillor's Community Interaction and Briefing Programme. There's a recommendation on page twenty-five. Would anyone like to move a motion please? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the motion that the summary of the councillor's community interaction and briefing programme be received and record, record of assemblies of councillors be noted.
Thank you, Councillor Sutton. Do I have a second? Councillor Hazelman? Thank you. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Say that it just is a, an interaction of, of what the councillors actually can be looking at. At this stage, it's very short compared to the usual programme because of the COVID-nineteen. So I'm looking forward to relaxing of the COVID restrictions and getting back into normal routine again, sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councillor Sutton. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to mention that there has been some significant change in the way we're doing things at the moment. And I think from my learning and my perspective, it's going to be interesting to see how we carry that into the future. Tonight, we're doing Zoom council meeting. I've had lots of committee meetings via Zoom. And also looking at, you know, just different ways that we communicate. So I think, you know, what we've seen this last, this last month or six weeks or more, let's hope we can have some positive learnings from it, and it'll be interesting to see what we carry into the future. But as far as our interaction with the community, yes, the face-to-face is definitely what we want to be doing. And I'm certainly looking forward to getting back to the community and, you know, being involved in more activities as we come out of COVID-nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? No? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the last item, number sixteen, urgent business not included on the agenda, new. With that, I declare the meeting closed at six oh five AM. Thank you very much, everyone. Stay safe, stay healthy.